Aloha, everyone. We're gonna get started. I'm calling this meeting to order on November the 8th at 7:00 PM. Gavelling in. First up on our agenda, we have Emergency Responder Monthly Reports. Honolulu Fire Department, are you with us online?
I'm Fire Captain Scott Carden from Kahului Fire Station. The stats for October, we had two nuisance fires, one activated alarm fire, forty-five metal coals, one motor vehicle collision with pedestrians, six motor vehicle collisions, and one ocean rescue. Holiday cooking safety. Keep everyone safe this holiday season. Thanksgiving is the peak day for home cooking fires with more than three times the daily average of such incidents. Christmas Day and Christmas Eve ranked second and third with both having nearly twice the daily average. Unattended cooking is by far the leading contributor, factor in cooking fires and fire deaths. So the advice is stay in the kitchen and focus on the food when you're cooking on the stove top. Stay in the home when cooking your turkey and check on it frequently. If you want to fry a turkey, purchase it from the grocery store, restaurant, or buy a fryer that does not use oil. Turkey fryers that use cooking oil are not safe. These fryers use large amounts of oil at high temperatures, which cause devastating burns. Consider purchasing an infrared fryer, air fryer, or electric turkey fryer that has been listed by a qualified testing laboratory. Do not leave fryers unattended when in use. Are there any questions or concerns?
Mahalo for the report. We thank you so much for assisting getting that wildfire out up here on Wahekaia Road. Board members, anything to add?
I'd like to ask how many, if you could, not right away, but give us some figures. How many fires there have been up in Waikani Valley, Waikani Valley Road? It's a chronic site for burning trash and so on and a huge concern, especially with it being as dry as it is. But I think that most of these fires are occurring on city and county land.
Uncle Cliff? So sorry, we can't hear you. If you could come turn your mic on.
What is the timeframe you want it? The timeframe of all the fires on Waikani Valley Road?
What's the timeframe?
Waikani Valley Road?
What's the timeframe that you'd like him?
Five years ago.
He's asking what the timeframe is that you want the data from?
This past year.
One year?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. Uncle Cliff?
Yeah. Estimated how many acres in burn up Kahului the other day?
How many acres?
Yes.
You mean up the mountain?
Yeah.
If you can just look at it. I don't know how much acres that is.
No, that's why guys were talking, you know. I said, hey, you stand on the highway, you look up the mountain, you can see. I mean, it's bad.
You guys can estimate yourself.
Yeah.
You can see them from here.
Yeah. You know, it was pretty good because I watched them. You guys had hard time for getting to the area, you know, and never take long. I heard the helicopters come over. You know, the one from Mililani. And that didn't put them out pretty fast, you know. So I don't know if you guys had on ground crew out pounding the ground. But that is kind of high.
There was a crew on the ground. It wasn't us, though. It was a different watch.
Mahalo so much, Kahului Fire Station. Community, is there anything to add? Community online, anything to add or ask? Thank you so much for being with us, HFD. Moving on in our agenda to Honolulu Police Department. Honolulu Police Department, do we have a representative?
Good evening. I'm Officer Jared Atkins of the District 4 Community Policing Team. The stats for HPD for the month of October was one motor vehicle theft versus one the previous month. There are two burglaries in October versus zero the previous month. There were seven thefts in October versus five the previous month. There were five U M Vs or car break-ins in October versus two the previous month. And there were zero robberies in October versus zero the previous month. And then as far as last year, motor vehicle thefts were the same. There were two more burglaries last year. There were four more thefts last year and car break-ins stayed the same. I can take any questions or concerns?
Mahalo, HPD. Board members in the room, any questions for HPD? Board members online, questions for HPD? Community in the room? Community online? Mahalo, Officer Atkins for being with us. Moving on in our agenda to filling of vacancies on the board. Subdistrict 5, we have one vacancy. Community in the room and/or online, is there anything that you would like? Anyone that is wanting to fill the vacancy? Oh, no quorum. No, Uncle Rick is on. Uncle Rick and Ian is. Rick and Ian are on, so we have quorum. Just a moment ago. Hello, my community again. Is there anyone that would like to fill a Subdistrict 5 vacancy? Or a Subdistrict 6 vacancy? Okay, we welcome you to tell your friends, your family, if they live in those subdistricts, to come and join us here on the board so that we can have a full board. Moving on in our agenda to City State Federal Reports. First up, Mayor Rick Blangardi's representative, Jero Sumada. Mahalo, Jero.
Jero Sumada, Deputy Director, Department of Planning and Permitting. Let me make this quick. So the kayak rental at 47183 E O U Street, from a, there's two parts to this. From the DPP perspective, our zoning, they are allowed to operate the kayak rental from that residential house under the following conditions. The kayak equipment must be stored in an enclosed area not greater than 250 cubic feet. And off-street parking must be provided for customers to load and unload any kayak equipment. That means on their property. So then we did an inspection on September 21st, 2023, and found no violations. Part one. Part two is we had a meeting at the request of YAKA, and we met with DLNR. DLNR, Don Care, did an inspection. No, they issued a cease and desist order based on the pictures that were provided to us and we sent to them. So they issued a cease and desist letter to them. However, we're hearing some updates that the board can share in a bit. But, okay, so that's that one. The next one is the crane operation and stockpile at 47083 Community Highway, Assuring of Property. We did a site visit on November 3rd on the ocean side. So three of our DPP staff went, I think there's somebody else. But anyway, from that site visit, we're gonna do a further site inspection of the boulders that are stockpiled on the property. And then the other part to that one is there's an SMA, Special Management Permit, major application that was filed very recently. We accepted it. And once we go through it, they'll send out a public comment on this week that we're gonna send it out. There's gonna be a tentatively scheduled a public hearing for the SMA application on December 19th. But that's where our chance where the public can make comments. And then after that, it'll be submitted to the City Council for consideration. Laylani Park closure hours. I'm gonna read this from DPR, from Parks and Recreation. Given the length of time, Laylani Neighborhood Park had signage posted incorrect hours and the fact that no one in the community requested us have the park remain open until 10:00 PM. DPR is going to keep the long time posted hours. The park closes at 9:00 PM. Invite the Neighborhood Board to let us know if they want the park hours extended to 10:00 PM. But in the absence of hearing from them by December 31st this year, we will change the hours on our records to match the 9:00 PM closure on the site. Next one is homeless camp near Haia Kea Pier. EFM, facility maintenance store property bench with Honolulu Police Department assistance investigated the concerned homeless camp on Community Highway near the pier leaving bags of rubbish along the highway on October 20th, 2023. Vehicle was found with bags of rubbish and other debris approximately 100 yards north of Haia Kea Pier. Bags and debris were removed from the area and outreach services were advised to the reported individual. Crosswalk near the Haia Kea Pier. The EFM is recommending referring this to EPS, Department of Transportation Services. Crosswalk was previously requested removed personally by EPS. Last one is permanent guardrails on Community Highway between Neo Meo and Lumaj. Plastic barriers, barriers will remain based on replacement metal guardrails are installed. City will consider keeping an existing opening to allow beach access and a replacement of metal guardrails.
Mahalo, Jero. Board members in the room, any questions for Jero? Uncle John?
So the deadline, I mean, the public hearing for the SMA will be on the 19th?
December 19th, tentatively, December 19th.
Okay, so that puts it past our next neighborhood board meeting, so we could.
I'm aware.
Yeah, okay, good. And then on the guardrail issue, I don't think I described it well enough. But if you go towards Haia Kea, past Brenton Oahu House, just a little bit past. There is a, there is an opening there where the bank just plummets. Well, no, it's not that it's collapsed. It says just right there, and it's really a dangerous spot. I don't have a pole number or anything that maybe we can call that. But it's a really spooky spot because if you're coming from Haia Kea, just if you blink and you might just.
Maybe I can call you later.
Yeah, okay, sounds good. Yeah, and thanks, by the way, for Waiohule. We've got a follow-up with Dini Nakame, HFC. We'll do that.
Mahalo, Uncle John. Kiana?
Yeah, just an update on that kayak. Like I was telling you, definitely not enough parking there for people to come and rent and be off the road. They constantly block the roadway. And that's basically the biggest complaint from the neighborhood is that like they gotta wait there for people. The people who come don't care. They take their time, load up their kayaks, or they're like walking kayaks down the street, blocking people's driveways and things like that. So, yeah, I don't know what parking stall that they saw, but there isn't really one there. Just an update, that's it.
But I think that one, the referral is the Department of Police.
Okay, okay, Roger that.
Uncle Cliff?
Okay, we didn't get no report from the Long Bridge, the lights stays on all day, all night. I saw, I think, four months ago, that came in, but.
That's a new light that's on.
It's still, it's still on. You go in the day. I see Rachel's trying to find his way across the bridge. You know, but anyway, the light is still on. And then we get one on Wailehua Road. You're excavated on the property. So I guess they're gonna start working on that property. They shooting.
Mahalo, Uncle Cliff. I'll piggyback up on that. So that's Wailehua 1, Jero. There was activity this past Saturday. And to our knowledge, the SMA was revoked. The SMA minor was revoked, and they were not approved for an SMA major.
What's that?
So I don't know the, it's tentatively gonna be our 10 parcel. So that's Wailehua 1 is the development. And when you're coming straight up, it's on the right.
Thanks, Chair. I'm gonna piggyback off of what you just said. So I've sent in a couple of requests to DPP. Inspectors have gone out to this property before and issued violations for stockpiling, but it sounds like this is a new issue that's come up. Yeah, just wanted to say that it should be documented, all the activity over the last several months. Mahalo.
Ian, let's go to you online.
Aloha. Thank you very much, Chair. Jero, aloha to you. I'm getting a lot of community feedback from a DPP Planning Commission meeting that just happened recently over the Kula Ranch SUP. And so just wanted to actually ask you a couple of questions about that regarding the SUP and really the rollout of the conditions that had been asked about by, had been put in place by DPP members, you know, regarding how the community reports unpermitted activities. You know, this SUP that we made a motion on quite a few months ago got rolled back, got put down to just public pool, having weddings and events and things like that. And yet, the community is aware of other events that are happening and continue to happen in our plan for the future. So how does a community member go about reporting on that? One, to DPP, because there was a statement made in the meeting that honestly, that no reports or complaints had ever been made about the ranch. And we know that to be untrue. But so if there is a process that needs to be formalized so complainers can recognize, the community is asking what that is. And you can, you know, come back to me with that. And really, as far as it goes, there was also a recommendation that the ranch set up a complaint line. And so the community is asking what's the status of that? And how they should report on activities happening around the area? Forgive me, it's quite specific to your role, but.
No, it's fine. You know, really, you guys can just call us, call the complaints in directly to DPP's office. I'm sure even the council member of the district will also receive it because they send it to us to answer. So we have a formal process that we actually track complaints from the council member's office. That's two ways that you can do it. But anyway, I'll provide something next month.
Thank you, or even an email that would help my constituents be able to make complaints and track them as such and understand that process, that would be great. And looking forward, you know, there was activity between 6:30 and 8:00 AM up at Battery Cooper, which was taken out of that SUP. Last week, I believe it was Tuesday morning, a bunch of us surfers were there witnessing a giant back row breaking rock and hearing it from way offshore. And very concerned about these things because I mean, there was an assumption that the SUP had been approved, but we didn't know it didn't include all these other areas. And at 6:30 in the morning, you won't find an archaeologist there. And we know there's cultural sites at the point there by the bunkers. So these are likely concerns that need actual follow-up and actual witnessing. And so just to that point, thank you for being aware. Thank you for being vigilant. And please, you might want to look into that. You'll see fresh rocks that you're not there. Thank you.
Mahalo, Ian. Uncle Ken?
Yeah, piggybacking on Clifford's point about Long Bridge there at Haia Fish Pond. The lights are on all the time, but they are also not masked to keep from seabird issues getting distracted at night when they're on like they're supposed to be. And previously during the season, the night flying birds were flying into the area and getting hit by cars and trucks. And those are endangered, many of them are endangered species. So if you could look into it and see if there's anything we can do about getting those shields back on, they might still be on the old poles if they haven't been thrown out. But anyway, if you could do something with that, it'd be very much appreciated. And we do appreciate everything you do for us. Mahalo.
Mahalo, Uncle Ken. Community in the room, anything for the mayor's rep? Community online, anything for the mayor's rep? Thanks so much, Jero. Moving on to council member Esther Kiaaina. Hi, Esther.
Aloha. Good evening, everyone. I know I mentioned the grants and aid application deadline, but I need to remind you that it's November 22nd, 2023 at 2:00 PM. And we have included the link again in the chat box, but it's for a nonprofit organization. So, and I know that the key project has received, GIA projects from the, I mean, grant awards from the city. So I just want to make sure people are aware, especially with the holidays around the corner. I'm also including in the chat box a Resolution 23-271 urging a reduction of the maximum speed limits in residential neighborhoods. Regrettably, the state law directs that a study must be conducted, including in the neighborhoods that I'm talking about. And so this measure is urging the state legislature to waive that study so that the Department of Transportation Services can make an assessment. I'm recommending that in residential areas that the speed limit be lowered from 25 miles to 15 miles per hour. I know neighborhoods all differ. Some want it and some don't. But I feel that DTS should be given that flexibility. We are gonna be having a hearing next week before the Transportation Committee on November 14th at 2:30 PM. It may be changed because a lot of the hearings are switching because of various cancellations. But if anyone's interested, please let me know. On October 27th, I was fortunate to have a site visit to Kahului Regional Park. And John Rapun was there as well as Department of Parks and Recreation, as well as HPD. And what we're looking at is a potential base yard for the Oahu Invasive Species Committee. As many of you know, you know, regrettably, we have already lost the battle with regard to eradication efforts for the coconut rhinoceros spido on Oahu. But we have not lost the battle on the little fire ant. We believe that it could be remedied, but if we don't address it, then it will be lost as well, and it will be a matter of containment. So we are hoping to secure an agreement with Parks and Rec so that we could have a base yard for the Oahu Invasive Species Committee. So I just want to let everybody know that. Last month, a board member asked about ARPA money to be used by neighborhood boards. I did talk to the director, Loy Yunanaka, today and reminded me that the City Council had already provided $50,000 to the Neighborhood Board Commission, of which $1,000 was allocated for each neighborhood board. He told me that if any neighborhood board wants to increase or they need funds, please contact him directly. He did tell me that with regard to next year's budget, because of videography costs associated with COVID, they did not calculate for that. They will be seeking increased costs for videography costs. Again, if anyone has any questions, please contact them directly as the administration is developing the fiscal '25 budget. And then lastly, Bill 10, 2022, which is the Land Use Ordinance. Kim, if you could put in the box, in the chat box, the website. It's hondolusidicouncil.org/bill10. In the week of Thanksgiving, I will be reintroducing a bill so that I could give another lifespan for the bill. Currently, it will be expired in 2024, and we have a lot of work to do, including agriculture, which I know many of you are interested in. So if any of you are interested, please give my office a call. But what I will be doing is introducing a measure that will update the legislation up until May of this year with all of the changes that have been made by the former chair of the Zoning Committee, as well as myself. My objective is in the first quarter of next year to complete the remaining uses that we have not finished, which would include both agriculture as well as residential. And that's my report for this evening. If anyone has any questions, I'm available to answer any questions.
Mahalo, Esther. I just have a quick request that when the ag portion of Bill 10 comes up, if you could notify us directly specifically on that note as it would heavily affect our community.
Okay, and thank you so much for that. And I would recommend also, because you can start planning now, Ulapono Initiative and the Waifar Bureau, they had a stakeholders group and that they are not, I'm not only gonna listen to them, of course, because not everybody participated into that. But I will be meeting them during the week of Thanksgiving to hear what they have to say. They had a stakeholder group over several months. So all I would request is that people need not wait until I have a hearing. I highly recommend that people look at the language. And if you have any questions, please call me, my chief of staff. This is our highest priority right now because the Land Use Ordinance has not been revised in 30 years. And I knew, I know there are a lot of concerns by people. And I just ask for your patience. I do not want to kick back the issue to the Planning Commission because it's just gonna take several more years before they kick back another document, which may very well be imperfect to the City Council. And so I'd rather deal with it head-on and ask everybody respectfully that if you have any concerns, you have the language now. And if you need it, we will get it to you, but start working on it now. Because agriculture is so important, I'm probably gonna leave it to the last. So I'll start with residential and all of the other remaining uses and then have agriculture. I would guesstimate about the March timeframe. But if everybody could please be looking at it now because we're gonna be in the throes of the budget and we're gonna, you know, we're gonna be busy as you are. So maybe try to do it in the next couple of months.
Mahalo, Esther. Any other questions from board members in the room? Online? Community in the room? Community online? Mahalo for being with us, Esther.
Thank you so much.
Moving on in our agenda to council member Matt Wire's office. We have Moki Hana here. Mahalo, Moki Hana.
Aloha, everyone. Just a few quick legislative highlights for you. Council member Wire passed Bill 46, which aims to curb youth tobacco use, passed the third reading at council and was recently signed by the mayor. Bill 47, co-introduced with council member Cordero, also passed the full council this month. The bill would add manufactured compostables, such as the takeout containers we get from restaurants that say compostable, to the items we can place in our green collection bins for rubbish pickup. So tune in tomorrow morning on KHON 2 to watch Wake Up Today, where council member Wire will talk about Bill 47 on recyclable materials. Lastly, the Resilience Office published a draft of Climate Ready Oahu, the city's climate adaptation strategy. And they are looking for public review and feedback now through December 1st. You can comment to the draft document via climetredoahu.org. If you would like to join our emailing list, please leave your email address in the chat. And for those present, I encourage you to fill out District 2 email signup sheet. Happy to take any questions or concerns back to our office.
Uncle John, did you have something? No? Okay. Board members online, anything for council member Matt Wire's office? Ian?
Just real quick, is, again, from our community regarding SUPs and things happening up here in District, Subdistrict 1 up in the Uku'au areas, should we be alerting Matt Wire to the complaints being put into DPP and things like that?
I believe that's an issue you elevated, right? Already with, brought up with the mayor's rep? So, yeah.
Okay.
Ian, it sounds like the solution to that is to email DPP directly and CC the council members as well.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Chair.
Thank you. Uncle John?
Yeah, there have been, there have been all kinds of meetings happening around the fire ants. So I just want to know who in your office is kind of assigned to that issue, if not the councilman himself. Really important for him to be in on those discussions because between Esther from Waimea Nalo and you folks all the way around to communities I don't even know.
Well, happy to take the concern about the fire ants. Yeah, so I'll bring it up with council member Wire.
And helping to get that information out to neighborhood. And helping to get that information out to neighborhood boards, neighborhood associations, and so on down the coast, really, really critical. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mahalo. Community in the room, any comments for Councilmember Matt Wire's office? Community online, seeing none. Mahalo, Moki Hana.
Okay. Moving on to Board of Water Supply, Barry Usugawa. Barry cannot be with us tonight. He sent me a very short update. Main break report, no main breaks to report. There's going to be a two thousand and twenty-four poster and poetry contest. The Board of Water Supply has launched its two thousand and twenty-four poster and poetry contest. Poster contest is open for kindergarten through sixth graders. Poetry contest is open to the seventh through twelfth graders. This year's theme is "Our Water, Our Home," and the deadline to enter is February twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-four. For more information, please go to boardofwatersupply.com/wc w contest.
Moving on in our agenda to Governor Josh Green's representative, Scott is no longer going to be with us. We are going to have Lacy. Lacy, are you online with us?
Hi, everyone. I'm here.
Hi, Lacy. Thank you. Please go ahead.
Yeah, so as mentioned, Scott Marakami will no longer be covering this neighborhood board, so I'll be covering it moving forward. And then just to provide a couple of highlights from Governor Green's most recent newsletter. So as everyone knows, the state's been working tirelessly to provide relief via programs to those impacted by the Maui wildfires. And while Maui's recovery remains a priority, the state is also making strides in other areas to make our communities safer through programs such as the gun buyback initiative. So just to provide a quick update about that, the Department of Public Safety and Department of Law Enforcement partnered with the Office of the Governor and the Department of the Attorney General and Department of Health, as well as Department of Transportation and the Honolulu Police Department, to host a community gun buyback event recently on Oahu. This was the state's first such program staged in an effort to encourage people who own unwanted guns to turn them in with no questions asked and no identification required, and they would receive gift cards in return. So police and state officials recovered almost five hundred firearms altogether and gave out eighty-two gun locks. The full newsletter is at the governor's website, and I can also include the link in the chat as well. And then, other than that, happy to help address any issues related to this state. Thank you.
Mahalo, Lacy. Board members in the room? Uncle Rick, I saw you had your hand up earlier. I'm sorry I missed you. Did you have something you needed to say?
Thank you, Chair. I was wondering, for Board of Water Supply, if they might consider, you know, they monitor water usage per, per individual house lot electronically through the meter, the individual meters, and I was wondering if they might consider coming up with some kind of an app that we could, as homeowners, look at that same usage rate so that when we have a leak or something like that, we can, we can dodge it ahead of getting a large bill. So if you could pass that question on, that'd be great. Thank you.
That's an excellent suggestion. Mahalo, Uncle Rick. I will email Barry this evening. Uncle Ken, do you have something for Lacy?
Hi, Lacy. Welcome to the board. We have a water buffalo concern. Do you have any updates on that?
So the last I heard from Scott was that I believe you emailed him specifics about, I guess, the reason that the water buffalo needed to be weaned from its mother. And then I believe you had contacted Chair Shar Heard with the Department of Agriculture, and that it was being addressed. And that's the latest update I have. Is there another follow-up needed about that?
So I presume then I carry on with Sharon Heard at this point, or her subordinate, who's I also listed, has been previously dealing with this issue.
Okay. And then, I mean, feel free to copy me in, and I can, more than happy to help follow up on the issue as well.
Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate, and welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Mahalo, Uncle Ken. Any other board members? Anything for Lacy? Community in the room? Anything for Lacy? Community online, seeing no hands. Mahalo, Lacy.
Thank you.
Moving on in our agenda to Senator Brenton Owa's office. Member Jardine, will you be giving this? Please recuse yourself from the board during your report.
Yes, so I'm formally recusing myself from the board at this time, all the way through the question portion. So aloha, Hi'iaka, from Senator Brenton Owa's office. Had a quick report this evening, just wanted to update community about the Kahalua tree planting project happening along the Maoka section of Kahikili Highway between Ahuimano and Aha'ola Lo Road. So that's going to be, clearing activity will be taking place this Saturday, in the morning through the afternoon time, if community would like to get involved this Saturday. We are looking for places to dump guinea grass. We do have one location, but we're sort of hoping to spread that out as not to burden the one community member that has been donating his lot. If anybody has a chipper, we did have a chipper. Unfortunately, it got jammed the last time they were clearing. Or if there's just community that wants to just pick up small piles and run it to the dump, that would be much appreciated. We are looking at the Saturday, December sixteenth, to actually start planting. So for community that was interested in participating in that section of the project, that is December sixteenth. We don't have a time, but just please save that date if you are interested. And we are gearing up for, for the two thousand and twenty-four session as well. So if community had any potential bills, or C I Ps, G I As, anything like that, please contact our office. You can email me h.jar.dine@capital.hawaii.gov. And that's all I have. I will open it up for questions.
Aloha, Hi'iaka. Uncle John? Uncle Cliff?
Yeah. So he's going to plant ulu trees for a community farm.
So the plan is thirty-five ulu, thirty-five ohiaai, which is mountain apple, alternating in a row on the Maoka side of Kahikili. Spacing's going to be about thirty feet apart. The intention there is a community food source.
Wait, wait, kid. He planned down the opposite side of the road.
The Makai side.
Across the other side between the Ahuimano Road and Kahikili, there's some big area down there.
Where everybody ride their bike.
And even their cars. That's that mud pond, because I was just thinking, now they go plant ulu trees on that side. What, maybe ten years from now? You don't even see the mountain. Nice, beautiful mountain. All the trees going to block, and the way the landscape there, I don't know who's going to maintain that place, because the slope there is what? Forty-one, maybe less? I don't know. It's steep on the side bank. That's why the state don't clean the place. They just let the weeds grow. But now, they go plant on that bank, now you get on retaining on one side, and I don't think none of those people know the root strength on the ulu. They're just as bad as a banyan tree.
Okay. Thank you for that. I'll, I'll address that. So, yeah, there, there is a slope behind there, where we're, the slope, in some sections that is steeper than others. So we're not going to plant directly on the slope. Guidance from D O T is that there needs to be a forty-foot spacing from the edge of the asphalt, working your way towards the stream. And so there's actually quite a bit of space there. There's more than forty feet clearance before you even reach the slope. So we are looking at other vegetation to incorporate on the slope end of things to try and mitigate some of the things that you were talking about earlier. Oh, sorry, also did not address the long-term maintenance of the trees. So we are looking at different partnerships, community organizations, and just community members for the long-term care and maintenance of those trees.
Uncle John?
Yeah, I, you know, I've thought this project, thought about this project a lot over the last forty years. One thing, first, I want to, I want to commend Senator Owa for taking a shot at this. You know, nothing ventured, nothing gained. I remember when people like Tom Suha and Alliance Club planted grass along this area when Kahikili was built. I remember before Kahikili was there. And, you know, as far as the long-term maintenance concerns, I share Clifford's concern, who's going to take care of this in the long term? But one thing is for certain, nobody's taking care of the guinea grass without taking it out, and it's a huge fire hazard. It also obscures the channel, and so it becomes a graffiti billboard. Inside that channel is amazing. The graffiti is just astounding. I've always felt, I, I share Clifford's concern about view planes. I love view planes. I can be able to look at the coalhouse, you know, as you're driving through. At the same time, the travesty of what we have done to the environment by, by channelizing our streams is astounding. Even the guys, I mean, Mike Tulang was with the Soil and Water Conservation District, and, and, you know, I was railing on channels about thirty years ago now in front of a planning conference, and Mike came up to me and introduced himself as one of the guys who designed the channels. And, and he told me, he agreed with me. You know, we, we destroyed streams. What we did to those streams is we superheated the water. If an au'ou takes a left turn instead of going up Wa'ea Stream, coming back from its ocean part of its life cycle, it's cooked by noon. You know, it's, it's a superheated concrete base, even with the V at the bottom, that's a little more flow. It is a publicly owned corridor all along here.
Uncle John, can you wrap it up?
I'll wrap it up. What's really important is, as a publicly owned corridor, it is our responsibility to figure out what to do with it, to plant, to shade, and so on. So I expressed this to Hi'iaka earlier yesterday, and I, and I, and to Brenton as well. The opportunity that, that we face here is helping to get people, pedestrians, walking, bicyclists, and so on, away from Kahikili Highway. And I'd really like to see a pathway along there with trees shading on both sides. And so Brenton seemed open to that. I know Ed Sniffen is, and I have talked about that. So I'd like to encourage that, and let's see this project go forward. Let's try it out. You can assign who you want to go pick ulu for you, Clifford.
I've got, I got a quick response, because Uncle John kind of sparked something that I had wanted to mention, and this is not coming directly from Senator Owa, but more so from me having a bright idea, is, you know, I hear about there's a lot of ulu theft and coconut theft happening at like Papa Hanaku'a'ola, neighbors in Kahalua, and maybe the one unintended perks of having something like this accessible to the public is that it alleviates stealing within our communities, from our farms. And if it's a public source, it's not technically stealing, right? So it would take that burden off of people who actually farm for a living and, and live off of the food that they grow at home.
So, real, real quick, this corridor I'm talking about and the, the accessway, why that's so critical? If you go back and look at the Kahalua Regional Park plans, the challenge was how do we get the more urban parts of our community access to Kahalua Regional Park safely? And this is actually in those plans, in the Kahalua Regional Park plans, not only going this way on Kahikili, but going the other way to Kahalaya. How do we get people to Kahalua Regional Park? So the pathway, as I described to you, Hi'iaka, is something like what happened in front of Valley of the Temples. Maybe it's a paved pathway. And once people start to use it, then they're going to start to take care of it. They're going to pay attention to what's being planned.
Mahalo for them. Uncle John, I'm going to go to Uncle Ken, and then Ian, if you could keep your comments and questions quick for Senator Owa's office, I would appreciate it. Mahalo.
I don't know if this is piggytailing on John's comment he just made, but we do have plans for a multi-use pathway. Now, is that within the forty feet? Because it is a transportation option. So if you can clarify, how would our multi-use pathway that goes from the shopping center to the football field, where would it be there? And is that part of the plan so that you don't have trees right in the middle of the multi-use pathway, the preferred area of the multi-use pathway? Thank you.
Mahalo, Uncle Ken. That's a good point. If there are, like, actual drawn-out plans, I would suggest we send those over to Senator Owa's office so that he can think to plan ahead with that in mind. Ian?
Here, Chair, John, and Ken, with regards to all those ideas, do we need more trees? Do people need to donate trees? And are there options for other trees, like natives, like kukui, or hala, or other things like that as well? Just asking. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, so we, that was it? Okay. Yeah. So as far as the trees go, we did do the math and thought about full growth, the span of those trees. So Senator, right now, just wants to focus on ulu and ohiaai in an alternating linear pattern through that area as far as integrating other plants. He is looking at other areas. I mean, as a kid, we called it Loa'as. It's where Kiahiakahoi practices. Is it Kahalua Beach Park? Who knows? But that area over there, looking at that area and working with Kiahiakahoi to, to clean up that, that, the mulivai over there and get some natives going over there. There's a couple other areas that he is looking at within his district, state, and city lands that are not developed and are neglected, and how can we integrate community that are interested in planting and restoration efforts on those lands? So there's opportunity, if you would like to jump in.
Great. And you have enough ulu and ohiaai for now? Brodama'a'ai, Danny Affini's got you covered.
Actually, the ulu is coming from Peter and his son Ben Field. Peter's here, and then the ohiaai is coming from Rick Barboza at Huiku Maoliola.
Thank you for giving credit. That's awesome. Mahalo.
Absolutely.
Your mahalo.
Uncle Rick?
Hi'iaka, I mean, the folks that, that walk around our ballfield, excuse me, down at the district park, it'd be nice to think about a pathway, clear a lot of that excessive brush, and then clear a pathway so it goes completely around most of the property, like in the back where the, the proposed place for the Invasive Species Committee would go. And then, I think there's a way you could get behind Kia and then get up to Ahuimano, I mean, Ahilama Road, so we can consider maybe coming up with a scenario for a pathway, and then maybe some auxiliary planting, sort of as a, a long-term issue. Mahalo.
Okay. Just to clarify, this is like that pathway that borders Kahalua Lagoon as part of Kahalua Regional Park?
Right. But John and I have talked about for years, even when we came up with the design of the park, was to expand that all the way around, even further back, and then up, there's a way we can get up behind Kia and then up to Ahilama Road. And it just, for folks' safety and stuff, would be a great way to, to enhance that.
Okay. We could take a look at that, and then definitely work with somebody over at the city.
Mahalo, Uncle Rick. And again, Uncle Rick, if you have, I know you have a bunch of maps and drawings. If you have anything that's already sketched out, you can send that to Senator Owa's office. I'm sure that would be helpful. Community, anything from Senator, for Senator Owa's office in the room or online? One, a mahalo, Peter, again, for coming out this weekend with his chainsaw and getting in there, and his son, also on the excavator, mini excavator. Mahalo, Senator Owa's office. Hi'iaka, would you like to reinstate? Request reinstate?
Yes, yes, a request to reinstate.
So reinstated. Moving on to Representative Lisa Kitagawa's office. Do we have anyone from Representative Lisa Kitagawa's office? Oh, hello, Representative. How are you?
Good. Hi, everyone. Glad to be here. So just want to give a couple of updates. So my current, well, my office manager that all of you are familiar with, who has been with me since I got into office back in two thousand and eighteen, her last day with me was the end of October. I'm really sad that she transitioned into becoming a full-time law student, so she was doing the part-time law program, and so she's going to go full-time. So she was doing the part-time law program, and so she's going to go full-time. So I have a new office manager now. Her name is Wendy, and she started just a couple of days ago. And so at a future meeting, I'll introduce her. And if you call our office or email, you'll have Wendy as someone who's going to be helping you. So just wanted to make that announcement. It's been a couple of months since I've come back to the, been able to come to the neighborhood board myself. So just wanted to share that we've been busy in the past couple of months with a bunch of town halls. So it's probably been mentioned, we did one in Ka'ava regarding coastal erosion. And if you are interested in that topic, even if you don't live in that area, we have a email list that we are keeping, and we will email as information and future meetings come up. So if you want to be put on that, just email my office and we can add you. We also did a little fire ant town hall a couple of months ago or about a month and a half ago. So that's an issue in our community. So I know other people have probably talked about that already. And so just want to make sure that everyone's aware and that you test your property and your neighbors, ask them to do that as well. And then the last one was, we had a Kani'ohe Town Hall, mainly for the Kani'ohe Town area that we had done just a couple of weeks ago. And so community came on and were able to ask a bunch of questions. So we've been doing that. Also wanted to just highlight that as a member of the Finance Committee, I've had the opportunity to go on numerous site visits. So we did three Neighbor Island site visits. I went to the Big Island, to Maui, and to Kauai over the past month, have seen, you know, the needs on those islands, what's going on. We were able to see and visit Lahaina, and it was just, just very sad and just surreal, just how, how bad the devastation is. And so, you know, the legislature is going to be focusing a lot on the issues about Lahaina and Maui and wildfire prevention in the next session, and looking at how we can assist and make sure that, that doesn't happen again. So tomorrow, in doing site visits, I'm bringing out the Water and Land and Finance Committees to our community. So we'll be spending the entire day in the Heia area and in Kani'ohe Bay. So we're going to visit Pai Pai Oheia and Kako Oi Vi, and then we're going to take a boat tour around Kani'ohe Bay to learn about the cultural sites. Auntie Mahelani Saifra and Auntie Rocky Kaluhiva are going to be doing a cultural tour for us, and we will also have DLNR providing information on all of the areas that they manage, including the sandbar and some of the concerns that come along with that and some of the needs that DLNR has for the bay and as well as for Heia up here. So we're going to be doing those, that visit, and my colleagues are going to be coming out tomorrow. So just wanted to mention that and highlight that. And if you have ideas for the session coming up in January, we are getting started on our bills, and so just reach out to my office. So I can take any questions you have.
Mahalo, Rep. Kitagawa. Board members in the room, anything for Rep. Kitagawa? Board members online? Community in the room? Community online? Seeing no hands. Mahalo, Rep. Kitagawa, for being with us this evening.
Thank you.
Good to see you. Moving on in our agenda, to Windward Community College, Chancellor Artist Eshenberg. Artist, do we have you with us tonight?
Yes, I'm here. Allahamahi Kako. I have a few announcements, kind of exciting things that are happening, events this time. We have tomorrow an exhibit in our library. It's a tabletop exhibit, and we will have a presentation tomorrow from the Bishop Museum. It's on eugenics in Hawaii, and they'll provide insights and the debunk study of race in Hawaii. It's very interesting, kind of depressing, but also really interesting. And the Bishop Museum's sending an expert to kick it off tomorrow. We also will begin having our theater presentations. Oh, here, I'm going to go ahead, hit send. I'll give, put links for everything in the chat. We have Kahavi Massey being performed, as well as Aloha Attire. It's a double feature. It starts this weekend on the 10th. Shows are in the evenings, seven, I think, or 7:30 Friday, Saturday. And then there's a matinee on Sunday for the next two weekends. Because we opened our Hawaii Conservatory for the Performing Arts, we actually had too many students enrolled in theater this year to just do one play and really give them significant parts. So it's a two-for, two-fer, double feature. One Kahavi Massey Historic Trial, important within Hawaii history. And then the second one is lighter. It's by Lee Cattoluna, and that's Aloha Attire. And then the one other announcement I have is our Maconumele Scholarship Concert sponsored by Henry Capono is coming up on December 8th, and the tickets are just about to go on sale. So it'll be the evening of December 8th. They're having Ki'ikua, as well as Jeff Peterson and Keola Beamer are featured performers this year. It's going to be an amazing, fun night of just enjoying music and talk story with some amazing performers in Hawaii. So that's it, three events. I'll put the other links in the chat so everyone can know what's going on. Mahalo Nui.
Mahalo artists. Board members in the room, anything for artists? Board members online? Community in the room? Community online? Seeing none. Mahalo artists. Moving on in our agenda to Kani'ohe Bay Regional Council. Uncle Cliff, you have a report for us? Okay, mahalo, Uncle Cliff. Uncle Cliff, can you use the microphone just so people can hear better? Thank you.
Next week, the 18th, you've got two Makahiki's going on. One at the Canary Marine Base, and the other one is Pearl Harbor. So it's, the Marine Base is, I think, is on Friday, Saturday, Sunday. The Pearl Harbor one is only Saturday. So you guys like to learn a little bit about the Hawaiian culture? It's free. They feed you two hauria.
Okay, mahalo, Uncle Cliff. Moving on in our agenda to Heia, Kipir, Small Boat Harbor, Harbor Master, Tanya Bora. Tanya, do we have you online with us this evening? Okay, moving on to U.S. Congress Representative Jill Tokuda's office. Anyone from Rep. Tokuda's office online with us? Seeing none. Moving on to Kani'ohe Marine Corps Base, Gunnery Sergeant Orlando Perez. Auntie Christie, do you have a quick update?
I do. But first, Uncle Clifford, were you giving me, were you giving my report?
Sounded like it.
On the Makahiki.
Why you not come to the meeting and show your face?
Um, because I, I'm at the hospital with my dad. Anyway. I love you, Uncle Clifford.
Okay, go ahead, Auntie Christie. What's your update?
Okay, so just a couple of things. First, I wanted to share a couple of highlights that are in the past. October 30th, we had the Kapolei High School Marine Corps ROT, ROTC. And it's the only Marine Corps ROTC that came out, and they were able to talk story with several of our pilots and some of our Marines and get an idea of different job opportunities. And they got to experience putting on the EOD, the Explosive Ordinance Suit, that the Explosive Unit has to put on, hands-on learning for these young high school students, and some opportunities to see jobs that are not necessarily just for the Marine Corps, but, you know, in the community as well. Couple of things coming up in the future. Wanted to share about the Festival of the Arts Pacific, the FestPAC. They've actually requested some support from the Marine Corps and military. And for the Windward side, for MCBH, it would be to support housing and having a place to dock some of the va'ah that will be coming from one of the 28 island nations that will be participating. This is an amazing opportunity, and our, the, the base wants to support. I've already reached out to Bonnie Kahapea to begin the conversation of what that's going to look like, and just waiting to move forward with that. But planning is full force. And then, of course, the Makahiki, which is going to be occurring on the 17th, 18th, and 19th. So that's next weekend. Donnie Campbell is coordinating that with several of the lineal descendant families. And then for the rest of the community, December 9th is the Weed Warrior. If anybody wants to come out to the base to assist in removal of invasive species, it's open to the public. And I'm not sure exactly what they're going to do, but I know that you can call the environmental line as it's closer to the date. It may be mangrove removal, because that's kind of what a focus is right now. But that's all I have, and I will turn it over to Major Fox, because he has one big thing.
Okay, thanks, Christie. So in attending these boards, I know there's, there's one thing that, that I've learned, and that's that you don't like to be surprised, you like to be informed. So I think we're going to do something a little bit unprecedented in terms of environmental assessments. There is one coming up. The draft EA will be published in December, towards the end of December, which will lead to the public comment period. But in the interim, I built, I thought a website. It's got fact sheets, frequently asked questions, the NEPA process, and everything you need to kind of one-stop shop. At the next meeting, if I could get some time on the agenda to do a presentation. So I'll go more in depth there, but I just wanted to give you all a heads up. So it's changed to ground force modernization, so of our ground troops and some equipment. A lot of the equipment is already resident across the Marine Corps and on Oahu. We're just kind of repackaging it and how we train with it. So if you remember in 2021, we did the home basing EA for the MQ-9 and the KC-130. So we took, took our lessons, learned from that, and we'll try to apply it to this one. So before the public comment period, I will do my best to prepare you all, give you all the information you need to make an informed decision. And we strongly encourage, you know, your, your comments and concerns. Prior to the draft, there's an email on the website that will come to me, and I'll, I'll answer your questions. And then once the EA is published and available for public comment, there'll be a different email address, and we'll update the website. But it is, it is live, and I'll, I'll share it with you before I leave tonight.
When is the public comment period timeframe?
I believe it starts on December 26th.
And completes at what point?
Uh, yeah, 30-day period.
30-day period, okay. So we are in recess in December?
Okay.
So we'll tackle that in January and have a real, real quick turnaround then.
Okay, okay. Yeah, you should have all the information you need to make a, make some, some good informed comments to us.
Mahalo. Was that it?
That's it.
Thank you so much. Board members in the room, anybody have questions? Hiaka?
I have a question for Christie. Was just wondering how the restoration efforts are going at Luupia?
We're not doing anything for this quarter. We're looking for a weekend in January where we'll be able to have a retreat. Senator Kokololi wanted to kind of table it until January. The MOA does specify quarterly that we do at least one out, you know, meeting out there at least, you know, like I said, once a quarter. So we're looking at January, but I think during the Makahiki, because some of the same people, we'll, we'll be conversating about some ways forward.
Mahalo. Board members online, anything for MCBH? Ian?
Allaham, Christie. Just real quick, real excited, been involved with Makahiki out there for decades now, and really appreciative of Donna Campbell and Uncle Wally and everybody who makes that happen. Please, will you alert the, the water safety managers and, and aquatic director to that so that we can properly prepare to host and, and help with those, those Makahiki aspects?
Of course, automatic. I, I will text Clark tonight and tell him, be on the lookout.
Automatic, we'll be there however we can as representatives of Koa. Mahalo.
Mahalo.
Mahalo, community in the room, anything for MCBH? I see a question in the chat for the website address.
Okay, yeah, I'm going to get that to you.
Okay, all right. Thank you so much. Thank you so much, MCBH and Auntie Christie. Moving on to community topics, tentative emergency pod sites, KK Cert President Maurice Amudio.
All right, thank you, Chair. This is an exciting thing for me, in many ways sad, because it's almost 12 years to the day that I first came to this board and some of you were on it. And it had to do about how was our community prepared for an emergency? And it has to do with my t-shirt, which is Superstorm Sandy. And I just come back, and New Jersey was a mess in the area that it hit. And I came back and I asked the board how we do, and I told them what I had observed. And the response was that we didn't have anything. But they did refer me to Ha'ula, okay? And hooked up with Ha'ula and found out what was going on, and it's the development of certs. And the terms that I have there to prepare, respond, and recover are things that we have to move into the recovery and the response aspects rather than the prepare. We go next slide. This follows, this follows pretty much what I gave the handout. Now, the community, the goals here have been the same all along, and it's community-based. When you guys told me that we didn't have anything going, particularly for the Windward side, we got involved with the EM and various agencies, and they said exactly the same thing. So it was really thrown 12 years ago on the communities to get themselves prepared, and that certs, okay? And it is looking at, and this is what I'm asking you folks to do with your specific communities, in case of a hit of some sort, and it, it varies, I can't ever tell you, oh, you're going to have a fire, you're going to have a landslide, I can't tell you that. That's why I want you to be looking at what are your needs and your possibilities. And then we're going to get into some kind of solutions on, on this, or how to address that. And that's really learned from Lahaina. Since the day after Lahaina, I was involved in, I think I mentioned this, the VOAD Volunteer Organization Zooms with the 100 and some odd agencies involved in helping Lahaina. So my brain was just like exploding with what can be done. This is about the certs. You saw on that the flow of how it goes, either from the top, which is FEMA, or the bottom, which is us. But it's us that have the whole purpose of this. The community of Lahaina has to help the community of Lahaina, okay? Others help, but it's not it. This is how you get trained in CERT, which deals with identification of emergencies and how to respond to them, but not what I'm getting into. These are all of the communities that have certs that are established. And we have in Kani'ohe coming up a training in the beginning of the year. You have to go on the DEM and you have to deal with Eventbrite. That's what you've got there and you have here, okay? And if you want to talk about that later, you can ask me, but it explains it there, okay? Next. Okay, now, this is what we're getting into now, the current buzzwords, all right? The preparedness, generally speaking, nobody's prepared, okay? And particularly on our island, what my professionals tell me is that 80% of us who get all this information from HECO and from DEM and from this, that, and others, they really don't have anything, okay? So the situation is being prepared after the fact. And after the fact are these types of things to help us being sustainable and respond and recover. So what we're talking about in this community, looking at are what are called pods, sea pods, or hubs. And John, we're looking at hub for this key project, right? And talk about that a little bit more. They pretty much tell you, the handout, and this pretty much tells you what, what happens at these. I have some pictures on this. Did anybody ever work on a pod? Okay, I did about half a dozen. You did? I did about a half a dozen of them, and they range in sizes. That's why I've got pods and sea pods, and that's in the next pictures. And there are Papa pubs, and you might have seen this on the shows at Lahaina. That was neighborhood stuff, which is probably what your communities would have more of because you are farming communities, so rather than, you know, the cities. This one is your, was a pretty large one at First Prez. It is, was organized fully, this was during COVID, and this was organized by the DEM. And it started the night before in the setup. That's their driveway. And a big, big, big issue, the driveway going out, big, big, big issues about safety, about logistics. Big, big, big issues about safety, about logistics, signing in and on and on and on. Then there is, next slide please. The foodstuffs that comes in and the trash that has to be dealt with. The organization of these big C pods are done by the big guys. They are done by DEM, the food bank, farmers alliances, Red Cross, okay? This is not done by us, okay? Not by any means. But everybody in these big agencies are used to these things. These have been done. It's not, it's not a new ballgame. It would be if you've never been involved in it. But Crystal Van Beelen, who was at the DEM at the time, she was trying to groom me to get into this for us. You can see what, what goes on. This is also the layout. Look at the amount of, it's just like one setup of the food that was delivered during the beginning of COVID. And that went the whole driveway way. Next slide. This is a smaller pod. This was during water crisis and technically associated with Red Hill, but stretched down to the Kupalina homes to down Erofoi Point. This one ran that length of time, seven days a week, twelve hours a day, distribution of water. This was supplied by primarily the Navy. And I, well, you can see some of the bottles of water on this. And I think the next slide. Yeah, you can see a big water tank that was delivered to us. People were given five gallon containers and stuff so they could take water home. Every day people could pick up one or two cases of water. And then I gave you another aspect of logistics, logistics, you know, keep track of everything. So that's a smaller one. And it, it lasted the whole time. The other stuff is food, I gotta go. Okay, flip side, flip side. Yeah, here, this is it. This is my concerns and John, I don't know what, you know, how much you got into this. In Ha'ula, they are preparing a hub. Now, a hub serves as a community base, not only for an emergency, but also for activities as the community exists. And they have a superb program in Ha'ula for this. And they were looking forward to a brick grant, which I explained all there and on your paper. Now, the issues, they were denied in the beginning. It had to be an underserved community. Ko'ola Loa could be considered an underserved community, would be concerned, like us too, Ko'ola Poco on account of our needs and, and one road and all that kind of stuff. We would be considered to us an underserved community, but not to FEMA. And this is what it goes into, okay? Our communities are not our communities. Our communities by FEMA are defined as Oahu. And Oahu is not an underserved community. So what is being addressed now is using, oh, I don't have that here, sorry, is using zip codes. Instead of identifying ourselves as Ko'ola Loa, Ko'ola Poco will be a nine, six, seven, four, four. And we are federally recognized entity. Okay, that's how it works on that. And another issue, which is not at your concern, but it really is hitting Ha'ula and Ha'ula has excellent building standards, fire standards, et cetera. FEMA did not like our state and local building codes, nor did they think that they were being enforced. So that was another reason why denied, okay? Now, this is not here, but on your paper, there was a meeting Monday with Dadi Ha'ula and the FEMA people and all that. And it got a little bit better. You've got this here. But it's only like they found, they found an out for Ha'ula. But it's not necessarily the out that Ha'ula wants, okay? So that, that's just developing because that was the only other data. So then the last thing, oh, this is what you guys have, Jared gave me. This is not on your paper, I'm sorry, but this is what you've identified so far. And it's you and your community. It's got nothing to do with any outsiders. This is all you, okay? And your districts and your neighborhoods on how would you handle something? Fire, landslide, flood, trees down, you know, X one, radio, albezia, whatever, you know? But that's what you gotta do. That's you. That's on paper, sorry, not on the slides. What you can do, you got to assess, you really, really got to look at it and think about it. You don't have to necessarily do anything right now. It's already being done a little bit for the community. So doing good. Look at number two, something that I don't know if, if you've really ever thought about. You've got your physical issues. Well, what about the people that have to flee from the coastline and come up to us? Okay, what do you do with them? Because they're in your neighborhood now, okay? They're on your farm. What do you do with that? I'm going to think about, okay? And then the number three is something that nobody ever really likes to talk about. But since we're generally country people, we can handle this. Day four is kind of like the nationally identified bad people come out day. And how do you defend your neighborhood? Okay, and we've got ours, we've got dogs and guns, so we know what we're doing. But it's planned. It, it's not waiting for the trauma.
Mahalo, Marie. Board members, any questions for Marie?
Not so much for Marie, but Jackson, I just sent you an environmental notice, an email for the Ha'ula community resilience of EA that just came out. I, I think it'd be great to share that site, even the comment period is over today, I think. But to share that with all of our board members because there's a ton of information in there. They worked really, really hard with G seventy, Uyo Ha'ula and G seventy is a really excellent piece. So definitely think, worth taking a look at as kind of a template for resilience hubs.
Mahalo, John. Anybody online, any board members online? None. Marie, quick question for myself. Are you looking for us to make a decision on what our pods, C pods, et cetera are going to be?
Not necessarily because it's you and your district. And if you wanted to work on something, a particular area together as a board, then yes. But that's really your decision. I mean, I would love it that, that I felt safe.
Mahalo. Mokihana?
Yes. It should be right there. It should be at DEM and it should look at like volunteers or something. I didn't look up the event. Please do, yeah, volunteers. That's one of my issues, but that's, that's why I growl.
Okay, community online. Mahalo, Marie. Yeah, if you can work with Mokihana on making sure that that link works for anyone who's interested. Moving on in our agenda, I have line ninety beach park bathroom closure signs and hours. I have community members Paul Faris and Nate Sarota agendized for this. Paul, I saw you online earlier. Jiro already gave the update on those signs. Do you have anything else that you need to go over with that?
Hello, Chair. No, I think Hiro summed it up nicely. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, moving on in our agenda to Kanioehebe shoreline update. First Vice Chair Hiaka Jardine giving the update on that.
Okay, thank you, Chair. We went out to Kanioehebe. I had three members from DPP, council member Esther, Kiaina and her, and one of her staff members who came. And so we were able to kind of take a look at Scherzinger residents from the shoreline. And this is in response to community members submitting video and a photo of a crane dropping boulders into the ocean fronting that Scherzinger property. And so the DPP staff as well as council member Kiaina were able to observe a stockpile of rocks and boulders on the property. And they did say that they would look into that. At the time, there were no active stockpiling permits. So hopefully they'll be able to take action on that. They did also mention that the permit application is available online. Don't have that website on me. But if you go to DPP's website and look at their active permits, you are able to see it's a hundred and fifty page document. I did go through it today. A good chunk of that is pictures for those of us that are visual readers. Don't get intimidated. It's a good document. There is some reference to historical and cultural aspects on or around the site. So I suggest everybody go take a look at that. I think that was it, yeah.
I do have that website here. It's www.honolubu.gov/dpp-public. I'm drawing a blank right now, hyphen input.html. So that's where you can find the application package. I'm gonna put this up for discussion right now. Board members. Uncle Cliff?
So when you first went out there, you guys couldn't find no boulders on, on the property, right?
On the property, yes, there was a stockpile.
They were all in ocean already.
On, no, still a stockpile on land. As far as the ocean goes, we weren't able to get all the way up. We stayed on a boat, stayed dry. So we weren't able to get a clear visual of the rocks that were seen in the video. What I forgot to mention earlier that I, I just want to have on the record is that I also did mention during the site tour that community members are concerned about their property taxes being raised as a result of this residence being built. And I did also say that I realize it's an issue across Oahu. Everybody's dealing with it and there's not really a clear solution in sight. But just so that those, that was their main concern, I just want you to know that I did raise that with DPP and with Councilmember Kiaina.
During this shoreline tour, we also viewed where Auntie Rocky had reported that rocks were being dug out from underneath Kamehameha Highway and pointed this out to DPP and Councilmember Kiaina as well. I just wanted to make sure that that was touched on as well because the shoreline tour was for a multitude of things. Those were just the most pertinent that were reported by community. Since we are in recess in December and the comment period and the hearing for the Scherzingers application is going to take place probably on December nineteenth, I'm going to ask if anyone has a motion regarding public comment.
I'd like to make a motion that we submit the reso that we did in December of 2022. Maybe along with a letter that reflects a little bit more current status of the property, given the stockpiling with no permit.
Second from Member Machado.
A second, yeah.
Do I have any extensions? Oh, sorry, sorry, discussion period. Forgive me, continue.
Jackson, do you have that reso? Is that something you can pull up and put up on a screen?
I can pull it up. I can pull it up. Uncle John, are you looking to edit this resolution? Okay. If you just give me a moment, let's, if there's any other discussion, I'll move to you, Ian, while I pull that up.
Just asking, I mean, in particular, the idea of stockpiling boulders, but there are also two very large boulders that were prominent on that site for time immemorial before they were moved and removed and disappeared. Were those stones perhaps seen down below or were several large stones? Does this have anything to do with them? And, and, and there's a greater issue across the state as well as property hikes, tax hikes. There is a continued attack against all cultural sites on private property without the oversight of an SHPD and a dope care that can handle that. So like bigger issue, did we see any sites that could be some sort of Ku'ula kind of thing? And, you know, is there any reconciliation or is there any, any sort of anything that goes on? And can we address this greater issue across the, the island, let alone the state? Sorry, got to ask.
Thanks, Ian. I'm gonna try to tackle that one if that's okay, Chair. So as far as what we could see from the boat looking towards land, there were no visual structures other than the stockpiling of boulders that had not previously been there. And also if you look at that hundred and fifty page SMA permit application, there are multiple photos of the property where I don't see any boulders. But I would encourage you to submit public testimony at that DPP hearing coming up in December, either verbally or written form.
Okay, thank you. Please, please make us aware of it. And I just wanted to say that, yes, there were boulders that were concerning before the fencing went up. And it's sad to see what's happened and how we might, how we might fix that. Thank you.
Mahalo, Ian. Uncle Cliff, real quick, and I'm gonna jet through our December reso regarding the topic.
Okay, on that crane there that they had, there was a wheel vehicle, you can drive them on a road. And we don't, that guy could pick up that boulder and set them out in the ocean. I think that's what they did in preparing for the retaining wall. And there's another place around the corner, Pakole, he come down, they just finished that house. And from the top, if you, I never go down, but if you look good, they build one retaining wall on ocean.
Okay, mahalo, Uncle Cliff. So Uncle John, in response to refreshing your memory with our resolution, the Kahalo Neighborhood Board number twenty-nine resolution EA slash SMA scoping request for the proposed Scherzinger Residence TMK one four dash seven dash zero one nine pull-in zero eight two, December seventh, twenty twenty-two. Whereas on November fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, Planning Solutions Inc., representing the proposed Scherzinger Residence TMK previously mentioned, requested input from the Kahalo Neighborhood Board regarding the proposed project's nature, scope, potential alternatives, or any permits, approvals that may be required, and so on and so forth. I'm skipping forward to therefore it be resolved that the Kahalo Neighborhood Board number twenty-nine recommends that Planning Solutions Inc. include a cultural impact assessment and an archaeological inventory survey in their environmental assessment. And be it further resolved that the SMA major permit is sent to the State Historic Preservation Division for review and the cultural practitioners or people within, with cultural knowledge about the area be consulted prior to construction. And be it further resolved that the copies of the resolution be sent to pertinent members. So that is the quick version of that. Is there any further discussion from board members in the room or online? Okay. Okay, does anyone oppose the motion made and seconded by Members Jardine and Machado? Okay, so the motion passes unanimously and I will get to work on that letter to submit along with our resolution for public comment in and or around December nineteenth. Community, do you have any questions about, about what just took place there? Be happy to explain online or in the room. Okay, moving on. We are going to the invasive species updates and I'm gonna really quickly just propose a resolution that was requested of us from Senator Kioha Kholle's office regarding little fire ants. So board members, you have, you should have a paper copy and/or it is, I believe Jackson may have been able to circulate it earlier today. If not, I will just read it really quickly. Kahalo Neighborhood Board number twenty-nine resolution regarding HDOA hold a public hearing on the administrative rules that grant them authority to take more effective action to eradicate the invasive little fire ants or LFAs from our islands dated November eighth, twenty twenty-three. Whereas HRS one forty-one dash two requires that the Hawaii Department of Agriculture, HDOA, take action to stop the spread of invasive pests throughout our community. This includes adopting rules to require the quarantine, inspection and humiliation, among other things, of plants or plant products or plant products that harbor invasive pests. And whereas rules were approved by the Board of Agricultural Agriculture in February twenty twenty-three. and whereas HDOA administration is refusing to hold a required public hearing on the rules. And whereas HDOA's reasoning for the delay is that portions of the rules were considered a quote-unquote "deal breaker" by a nursery industry group during a private consultation with the HDOA. This is circa a letter to Senator Kyohe Kholle dated 18 October of this year. And whereas, as a result, the HDOA's current position is that they need 10 months to privately work out a compromise with the nursery industry before they restart the process and take further action. And whereas, Oahu alone currently has 34 or more known active LFA sites. Therefore, be it resolved that the Kahului Neighborhood Board Number 29 demands that the HDOA hold a public hearing immediately on the administrative rules that grant them authority to take more effective action to eradicate the invasive LFAs from our islands. And be it further resolved that copies of this resolution will be sent to the Koala Poco Hawaiian Civic Club, Mayor Rick Langiardi's office, Councilmember Matt Ware, Councilmember Esther Kiaiina, Office of Hawaiian Affairs, Department of Land and Natural Resources, DLNR, Hawaii Department of Agriculture, HDOA Representative Lisa Kitakawa, and Senator Brenton Awah. Is there a motion on the floor? Mahalo, we're entering the discussion period. Board members, any discussion in the room? Or members online?
Just that recently, we went to Hilo for a wedding. We got bit down by Richardson Park at our vacation rental. There was no, there was no sense to notify. There was no any sort of authority to say, hey, you have to watch out for this even if you go on the grass. And it really highlighted the idea that this problem is everywhere, every day, and it will very strongly impact the Waukui. So thank you for supporting me.
Mahalo, Ian. Any other board members, any other discussion? Okay. Okay, I'm asking for unanimous consent. Board, is anyone opposed to the motion on the floor to accept the resolution with the friendly amendment of also sending the resol to Governor Josh Green?
Here, here.
Okay, the motion passes. Mahalo. Community, any questions in the room or online about what just took place there? Excellent. Moving on to residents and community.
Just real quick, I mean, we didn't put it in our list. The list could be pages and pages. But I think we should take initiative and send this to neighborhood boards up and down the coast. Mahalo, Kanioei, and so on. Just, we should just do that because we're trying to build.
I'll do that as the Chair. Uncle John, we don't need a motion for that one. Mahalo. Moving on to residents and community concerns, I have, let's go with the subdistrict. So Subdistrict 1, residents and community concerns. Uncle Art.
Yeah, we got probably the biggest parade in Kanioe on December 2nd. We have seven bands, we've got powell riders, and we're looking at about 4,000 participants. The parade will run about two and a half hours. I've been with the parade 56 years. I remember starting the parade back in 1963. And shirt I got on is a shirt that we're selling to get enough money to pay some of our expenses. So every bank in Kanioe is selling our Christmas shirts. And from small to large, it's $20. And 1X to 4X is $25. So I'm encouraging all of you that we need the money to keep the parade going. And our grand marshal is Ante, Ante Alas. So it's a good-sized parade. Thank you.
Mahalo, Uncle Art. Okay, Subdistrict 1, any community concerns? Subdistrict 2? One, Ian.
Just those that were mentioned earlier and also wanna thank John and the Waihole and Waikona community efforts to clear the rivers and the streams right now. What's going on down Makai down there by Waihole poi factory is excellent. Mahalo for those efforts. It's super important. So just wanna make sure the community concerns were reiterated in Hakipu area. Thank you.
Okay, mahalo. All right, Subdistrict 3, 4, 5, 6. Community in the room, anything to report? Peter, when you come to the microphone?
Just one thing that I just keep getting asked about from the people at the school and Key Project here is about Kala Park, getting the fence, gate, chain, whatever it is, removed and the no trespassing sign removed.
Can I comment on that? So I was actually encouraged in the discussion about the possible location of Oisk and so on in the back area of the park where that illegal horse arena was. One thing is really clear, I mean, you and I both know that the whole back area of the park, aside from Kala Park, totally, totally overrun with hardwood and everything. So I am, I came away encouraged. Mr. D was there, what is Mr. D's real name besides Mr. D? Maybe Mr. D was there and his higher up. And just the tenor of the discussion was, not only is that potentially a really good site for locating that base yard and so on, but I think what it would help to bring on is what Rick mentioned too. We gotta take down the alien forest that's back there. And that will, that will start to, the more we occupy that space, the more we're gonna take care of it. So, yeah.
Uncle John, did that come up in your meeting with Councilmember Kiaiina as far as the fence? Okay, all right, so it's been addressed with.
I just didn't have an excavator with a mulching hammer for me that day, so, yeah.
Okay, Peter.
Can we just put it on the next month's agenda?
So it'll be in January because we're in recess for December? Absolutely. Community online, anything to add? Okay, we're moving on in our agenda. To board business. Okay, so we're gonna look at the approval of the September and October 2023 regular meeting minutes. I'm just gonna ask if there are any objections to the September or October meeting minutes. Seeing none, can I get a motion? Oh, I don't need a motion for that. Okay, so no objections. So the meeting minutes for September and October pass. Mahalo, NCO for the advisement on that. Okay, moving on to meeting date, time, and location. We're currently meeting here, the second Wednesday of every month, 7:00 PM at the Key Project. In discussions during the conference of chairs with NCO, they're not looking for us to move our location again. If so, then that might be a thing where we end up back pretty much predominantly online with Kapalama Hale. So I'm going to recommend that we continue discussions with Key Project to get a larger room to accommodate the Neighborhood Board as well as community. Does anyone have anything to chime in on that?
We could all join the martial arts and then we could just be in there.
Well, and that's also a, I'm, okay. Mahalo, Uncle John. Moving on to creation of board committees and chairs. So real quick, I'm just gonna list what we had previously before our transition of election. We had the planning committee, which Amy Larson was the chair of, and she's no longer with us. We had infrastructure, which was Uncle Ken LaVassar. We had sustainability, Members Jardine and Masterson. And we had Nojona, Members Wak, and I believe Auntie Rocky. So previous Chair Wak was Chair of Nojona, and I believe Auntie Rocky was co-chair of that as well. Do we want to keep the same committees and assign new chairs for planning at Nojona?
I gotta comment. I'm gonna recommend that we discontinue sustainability and pivot it to invasive species, if anybody's down for that.
Okey-doke. Is there any discussion, any other discussion regarding the past and recently proposed committees? Okay, excellent. So I don't need votes for this. Oh, Uncle Ken, what you got, Uncle Ken?
I was just gonna support what Heiaka said.
Okay, excellent. I do not need voting for this. I can designate as we see fit. Ian, make it quick, please.
Same.
Excellent. So we're going to continue on with planning, infrastructure. We are going to nix sustainability and change that committee to invasive species and continue. I am also gonna recommend that actually we discontinue Nojona. Does anyone have objections to that? I didn't think we had a whole lot of meat in the committee at the time of its existence. Uncle Ken, yes?
Yeah, a question for NCO. If we find a need to create a committee further down the line, would we be able to do it like six months from now?
Yes, mahalo, Uncle Ken.
Okay, great, sounds good to me.
Chair, yes.
I don't have capacity for this, but I'm just gonna throw it out there.
Let's get into that in a minute. Okay, okay. So for planning, do I have anyone, any volunteers who would like to take over the chair for the planning committee since we no longer have Member Larson with us? If you don't raise your hand, I'm gonna assign you.
Let me just comment. You know, there's, I've seen the city council, there's such a thing as a committee of the whole. And we could be, we could just go into planning committee, but we can be a committee of the whole. In which case, you would chair.
I don't understand what that means, and I don't know if you remember, Uncle John, but I just had a baby. So that's not gonna be me.
I can't claim to having had a baby, so, yeah.
Okay, so, all right. So what I'm hearing is that Uncle John will be chairing the planning committee. Excellent, all in favor. Just kidding, I actually don't need a vote for that. Uncle John, say yes, say yes. Because, you know why? Because, Uncle John, you have such good ideas for connective pathways, so I feel like that should be your.
Is there a dream committee? I like dreaming.
No, no, sorry. Okay, excellent. So the planning committee will remain with Uncle John Rapun as the chair.
Let me just tell you too, so, okay, yeah, I'm passionate about planning. I'm gonna engage Amy to help us, even though she's not on board.
I, I love it. Excellent, because, yes, we need Amy still. Excellent, great. Thanks for accepting the planning committee chairship, Uncle John. Moving on to infrastructure. Uncle Ken, do you accept staying on as chair?
Not a problem, mahalo.
Thank you. And invasive species, Member Masterson.
And Rick is either co-chair or a committee member.
Call the mic.
Rick Tau is either a co-chair or a committee member.
Okay, sorry, Uncle Ken, one more time, I just had a little sidebar with NCO.
Oh, Rick Tau is either a co-chair or a committee member.
Okay, well, let's, we'll get to that because I'm appointing chairs right now and you guys can bring me your committee in January, okay? And so for our newly created invasive species committee, Ian, can we continue you on as chair in that switch-up?
Sure, didn't know I was chair, okay.
Okay, excellent. Member Jardine is stepping down as Chair of Sustainability and the new revamped invasive species committee will be chaired by Member Masterson. If Uncle John, Uncle Ken, and Ian, if you could get your committees together and present them for the January meeting, that would be excellent. Thank you so much for volunteering your time. Moving on in our agenda. We have, we have $1,000 funding. I want Member Jardine to talk a little bit about their origination. Esther kinda touched on that already. Member, sorry, Councilmember Kiaiina touched on that already. The expiration is essentially, we have less than a month for that, that NCO wants us to use it or lose it. So we don't have time to discuss using it for anything else. We can either take our $1,000 funding and invest it in little fire ant test kits, which seems to be pertinent, or we can give it back to NCO that they can use to fill budget holes.
Never, use it for LFA.
Uncle Ken, it's Uncle John's turn to talk. Thank you, Uncle John.
Ian, I'm gonna take the microphone away. Mute yourself. No, thanks, I agree. I think it should go for LFA. There's been all kinds of discussion about what are the real funding needs? These little kits, I mean, these little brochures and so on are really great to have on hand. Joe Watt has been super about getting them out there. People are requesting them. So, yeah, I would say let's put that whole amount of money for that purpose.
Okay, any more discussion from board members? NCO, how do we put this into action? Is there a clear and direct way? Okay, I will email NCO since we are unanimous as a board on using our $1,000 allotment for LFA testing kits for our community. Excellent. Moving on in our agenda to subdistrict reports. I feel like we kind of already touched on this in community concerns. If there's nothing else. Chair, yes. Member Jardine.
I wanted to comment on Agenda Item 7C.
Okay, yes. What would you like to comment?
I had this a bright idea, and if somebody wants to pick it up or they can throw it away, but a creation of a committee for emergency response. And get that, get that ball rolling.
That's a great one. NCO, do I have, do chairs of this have to be board members for committees? Okay, okay. All right, is there anyone that would like to volunteer for the emergency preparedness committee that Member Jardine proposed? Member Machado? Excellent. Member Kiony Machado will chair the emergency preparedness committee and come back to us in January with committee members. Okay. You do not need to be a board member to be a committee member, so yes. Mahalo, Marie, we are counting on you. Okay, moving back to Agenda Item 8, subdistrict reports. Does anybody have anything else they need to add? Uncle John, make it quick.
Just real quick, you know, some of us in Waihole came to an agreement of Waihole Group, our egg leases. I understand that most of the residential lots have come into an agreement. The other ag lots went into, tried to go further with negotiation and got nowhere. And it sounds like they're going into arbitration. That's one thing, so be something to follow. There is a concern of little fire ants. There is an infestation in Waihole, one of the nurseries, that buys from other nurseries. And so I bring that up because I think it's really important for people to understand movement of materials is where it happens. It's not just an ag thing. It's just, you're gonna go buy a lay, that lay may have fire ants. You're gonna move a piece of heavy equipment that's been sitting for a long time to somebody else's place? It may have little fire ants. You're gonna sell a car that's been sitting for a long time? So those are the things we have to think about. Mulch, all these things. So it's just, it's a new way of thinking. You have to pay attention to it. And the last thing would be just to, again, commend Senator Awah for testing the piles that got generated for little fire ants. It's awesome, that's the way to do it.
Mahalo. Okay, board members, any other subdistrict comments? Great, moving on in our agenda to announcements. We will be in recess next month, December 2023. Our next regular board meeting is gonna be Wednesday, January 10, 2024, at 7:00 PM at Key Project in this room. Also, a quick announcement, this isn't necessarily in our district, but the Honolulu Marathon is set to take place Sunday, December 10, 2023, beginning at 12:30 AM and going till 5:00 PM. So just be aware that if you are in town, there's gonna be road closures during that. Let's see, any board members, any other announcements that you can think of? Again, mahalo, Uncle Art, yes, so Kanioei Christmas Parade, December 2nd, looking forward to that. Board members online, any other announcements? Community in the room or online, any announcements that you'd like to share? Excellent. We're at Agenda Item 10, adjourning at 8:49 PM on November 8, 2023. Mahalo. Mahalo.
Hey, Ian. You get a new committee and you get.